Good evening. Welcome to the August 27, 2025 Regular School Committee Meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. Also, I want to recognize that Chelsea McHugh is not able to be in attendance this evening, so it'll just be the four of us. So we're going to move right along the agenda right now to open public comment. I don't know if anyone's signed up. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. We've decided as a school committee that we'd like to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, so would you like to start us?
That's what we should be doing at every meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Nathan. It's been a while since we've been back here. Yes, if you could just check and see if anyone's signed up for open public comment. Okay, seeing none, we're going to move along to the approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes here. We'll start with the first one from June 3, 2025. It was an executive session.
I make a motion to accept the June 3 executive session meeting minutes as presented.
A second. Any further questions, comments, or discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor? And that would be 4-0-0. Thank you very much. We'll move along to the June 3, 2025 Regular Meeting Minutes.
I make a motion to accept the June 3 School Committee, June 3, 2025 School Committee Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Any further questions, comments, or discussion? All right, all in favor? And that would be 4-0-0 as well. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to the superintendent update for Back to School.
All right, good evening. So we have had a lot going on already. We've had our orientations for our 5th graders and our 9th graders. We've had opening day. We had that yesterday with all our faculty and staff. And Sarah, you did a lovely message to everyone. It was one that really was of gratitude and really heartfelt in the impact that she has experienced as a parent in the Foxborough Public Schools and the reason, really kind of the impetus for you going on and doing all the volunteerism that you've done and that continued involvement that you had. But heard a lot of really positive feedback on your remarks from yesterday. We've got band that's been going on, sports that's going on. It is alive with students, which is awesome as far as our opening day in welcoming faculty and staff back. Prior to that, actually, we had our leadership retreats. I want to publicly thank the Craft Organization and Gillette for being able to host us for our leadership retreat. That's about 34 people. It's our administrators, it's anyone that's in a leadership role, and we had a great opportunity to come together and kick off the school year in great fashion. And then, at the same time, we welcomed many new people and we welcomed some new people to leadership roles and then new teachers and staff into the building. We have approximately 18 new teachers across the district, eight educational assistants. We have bus drivers extended day that have joined us as well and a new head cook at the high school because you can think back to one of our retirements. So that's really exciting to welcome them. And one of the things that I heard over and over from our opening day yesterday was how excited, particularly the new folks that came up to me and just thought it was an amazing welcome. They're so excited to be in Foxborough and the energy that you can feel from all of our faculty and staff that are here, it really is energizing. So exciting. We had a full day of professional development today. We have another professional development day tomorrow, and then we will be welcoming our kids back, which is the most exciting part, next week. A couple of other updates. We've just learned recently that the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, they have scheduled with us a senior site visit on September 11 for the Taylor School. What that means is that they will come, they will look at the facility. They've done this once before, but we're hoping that again, by having them come out for this particular study and really assess the building, the needs, they will meet with a number of us that are there, that we will end up in November, December, when they invite people into the grant program. We're hoping we have a different outcome this time. So we have that senior study with MSBA that's coming in September. So moving on, as far as updates, before we have our presentation from our Foxborough Police Department, I just wanted to do some updates as far as school safety. And that is going back to the incident in June that we had at the Ahern, as well as that really echoing across the district as far as listening to what people shared during that time at school committee and us working together over the summer, continuously over the summer, with our leadership team, with the Foxborough Police Department, and hearing from those, what was expressed and what are some of the things that we can look at maybe a little bit differently. And one of the things that came out was communication. And so we have continually had different processes in place, but how could we maybe communicate those differently? So some of the things that are going to be more visible with our staff and with our students is, for example, our standard response protocol. So when we look at, when we go into a secure, a stay in place that we've had, when those are medical incidents, many times or sometimes we've had a squirrel go through the building. Anyway, really publicizing what those different actions are. So as an example, one of the things that will be up in every building and every classroom are the posters that show what our standard response protocol is. We engaged in a training last April with I Love You Guys and have adopted their SRP, Standard Response Protocol. And the difference, only from what we had been doing in the past, was we had said stay in place and they use hold. So that is one of the differences that we're changing in our language. Teachers are going to be having those conversations. I've already started, actually, yesterday with building-based meetings. And so that is one poster that will be in every classroom, up in different open spaces across the building, to make it more visible as far as those particular actions. Some of the other things that we discussed over the summer as far as making more visible were things that we have in place, which is our anonymous bullying report, also the Foxborough Police Anonymous Tipline, really doing more of a campaign, if you will, to make it much more public. So here's an example of what is also going to be posted in our buildings, the See Something, Say Something. It is what we have continually, continuously talked about, but it lists on here a direct line to our school resource officers through email. It also has the information on here as far as the anonymous Tipline. And really, it is a community that we all need to have that particular mindset. If we see something, say something. And it holds all of us to that, to be able to protect our community. So those are visible posters that are going to be up. The other information that we have on the school safety website, we had a video created that explains the different actions that you would take in an emergency and what that means. That will be shared with students as well through their grade level meetings. We've always had grade level meetings at the beginning of the school year, but the difference is they will see that video, they will have more specific conversations, and our school resource officers will be joining us with those particular grade level, at all schools' grade level meetings. And then the other piece is that we have had a lot of conversations on the lockdown drills and, and over time, it's trying to find that balance of what's developmentally appropriate for students. But we will engage in lockdown drills with students and not just staff, which we have done in the past, but we'll go back to what we had done several years ago where we engaged in those with students. It will be developmentally appropriate and it will be in concert partnership with our public safety partners. And so that will take place over the course of the year and through student grade level meetings or assemblies. That information will be shared in addition to those. So in the long list of drills that we already have, when it comes to fire drills or barricaded fire drills or our evacuation drills, we will add the lockdown drills for students and we will communicate that with parents in different ways, and principals will be doing that as well. So in addition to that, you'll be hearing from our annual presentation here with our police department, but we're going to make sure that that is more visible and more communicated with our students. And then again, it's going to be visible through these different posters in our building so you can see that. The last part that I wanted to mention is that we, we can't help but know that in the world that we live in here, I mean, even today in the news with what took place, which is completely tragic and unconscionable when we think about the tragedy that took place with the church and the private school in Minneapolis, and our thoughts are with them. Safety is always our priority and will continue to be. We have processes in place and we will continue to reflect on those all of the time, and you'll hear that in the presentation as we go forward. And we will communicate with those different mechanisms that I've talked about and then also communicate when incidents happen as appropriate. Again, every incident is a different response. And so sometimes it might not be as quick as some people want, or we're going to do it as quickly as we can, but it's, again, everything is a different situation. And so we need to balance that. And we do that in concert with our public safety partners so we don't end up jeopardizing anything as part of any investigations or so forth. So I think that what I'd like to say is we're, we're really excited about an awesome school year. We see that our teachers are excited. We're looking forward to welcoming our kids back, but at the same time, we're going to have some of these other things that are in place as we move forward. We also are going to be working with our digital learning coaches. And so to be able to put on a information night workshop for parents, because we also know that a lot of people are really unfamiliar, whether it's social media platforms, what to look for, what are monitoring, things that they can do. And that is information we want to be able to help our parents with as resources too. So, you know, knowing, knowing what platforms your children are using, being able to have open conversations, what that looks like, being able to, you know, regularly check privacy settings if it has something to do that, and really just modeling good digital habits. But it does take a village, and the more that we can work together in partnership, the better that we can have that protection and preparedness in place. So with that, unless you have questions here, I know that a lot more will be discussed in our annual presentation with Foxborough Police.
I think we're good.
I guess the other thing that I will say, just as our critical incident training that we hold every year, just want to thank Pat and Michelle for attending that training with all of our new staff this year. So you were able to see firsthand what that looks like and the level of training that our teachers go through. So I did want to mention that, that you attended that as well, and thank you for attending.
One of the things that they mentioned in the training that sort of stuck out to me too was they were talking about the yearly fire drills, and this was obviously a third party that was doing the training for it. It's like, when was the last time you ever saw a school burn down, but you still do the fire drills every, every few months for it? And it's the same reason with like the lockdown thing. So I think that was a good, it's good to hear that they'll be doing lockdown drills or something along those lines to prepare for those situations with it. I did have a question about sort of just the general idea with the stressing with the teachers is that sort of fostering a culture within the kids to, it's okay to recognize like this red flag behavior in their classmates and to pass that along to the anonymous Tipline. So I do hope that as a part of that whole curriculum you were talking about, there's something about recognizing the red flags in their classmates. So even though they may not want to, it's, it is important because the kids will know before any of us do, so.
And I think that's one of the things where our SROs do engage, what we've talked about before, and all of the lessons that they do and talking with students about that. But to be able to, to really emphasize here that this is a direct line to them and it is anonymous, and if they hear that directly from our school resource officers, again, we've said it before, but really highlight it here, they have the visual to go with it and to be able to share anything if they have a concern, our families too. It's for, it's for anyone within the community.
Thank you. Yeah, see something, say something. It's best thing, for sure. Yeah, thank you very much. Very thorough. Are you all set? I don't want to, anyone else have any questions, comments? No, thank you very much.
Thank you again for attending.
We're going to move on to the school safety. We have the Foxborough Police Department and our school resource officers here with us, and they are going to do their annual update and talk to us a little bit about what they do. Thank you all for being here tonight. If you just make sure, you just share the microphone and make sure you speak into it so that people at home can hear you clearly.
I'd also like to acknowledge that all of our principals and our Director of Student Services are here this evening as well.
Thank you very much for everyone for coming. Thanks.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. My name is Mike Grace. I'm the police chief. I'm here to my left with Lieutenant John Chamberlain. He is the operations lieutenant who oversees the SRO sergeant in the program and also runs the patrol division. Sergeant Meg Allen is the SRO supervisor and also wears a variety of different hats within the agency. Joey Godino to my right is one of the SROs. Melissa O'Connor, known as MJ, is here, and Christina LaRose is our clinical social worker who works out of the public safety building that supports both police and fire on all of our calls for service and the rest of the town on many days. So we're here for our annual discussion about the school safety in general. I'm going to do the disclaimer right from the beginning. We're given a half hour. We really try to consolidate. I don't know if we're going to be able to do it in a half hour. Each one of the, the people at the table here are going to take a different role, and we're going to start talking about a variety of different topics. Those topics, just to give everybody, will consist of five different things we want to include. We want to talk about prevention, critical incident response, post-incident expectations, training, and community engagement. So those will be the five topics that we'll get into. But before we get into those, I just want to say, as the police chief, now I've been doing it for six years, one of the most important and one is our kids. I went to Foxborough High School. I still have one left in the high school. Many of the offices here have kids in the schools, went to the schools. There is nothing more important within the organization to making sure our kids are safe. I took that to a new level when I became the police chief, and I restructured the entire police department to build an SRO program, which means that the staffing levels that are assigned to the schools, as we have two districts in the town, equals what the patrol shift is handling for 18,000 people every single day. So the schools are allocated a sergeant and three SROs every single day during school. Obviously, we have training requirements and once in a while, days off, but even that, they're restricted on their days off due to the MOU that they have to take the days off during the summer and during school vacation. It's a big lift, but it's, I can't stress enough how much we put every resource that we have in the agency to supporting the school, the teachers, and most importantly, the parents and the kids. So when we talk about school safety, I'm going to regress back a little bit because the SRO program, DARE programs over the years, everything has changed. In 2018, there was a legislative act called the, I'm going to make sure I say, the Act, An Act Relative to Criminal Justice Reform. That act redefined policing in Massachusetts. It redefined everything from how crime labs presented with certification for their members, sexual assault kits, information sharing, how juveniles are treated, charged, adjudicated in Massachusetts, how information sharing between the schools and the police departments has to occur and is allowed. So all of that mandated a change. And so a 12-page MOU between the district and the police department was formed. Within that MOU, which is reviewed every single year, every aspect of our SRO program is evaluated. Some of the issues, and this is, you know, a change, I'm sure my age of 54, is the delineation between police officers in the schools and enforcement of any of the administrative rules set by the school. By law and by statute, the police have no authority and are mandated not to be involved. We can't use, and our district can't use, the police department as the muscle for the administration. Those days are long gone. We're, so some other items, even when we have incidents where things happen in our schools, the summons is the preferred method for any criminal act within a school, not arrest. Selection of the SRO is never based on seniority. It's all based on performance, and it's done in conjunction with the schools and the police chief. So everybody has a say in that we're just not assigning a person to the school that isn't meeting what we feel is in the best interest of the kids. Other information that schools acquire, they cannot share. They can't share gang information. They cannot share religion, immigration status. Any of those things or statuses of a child can never be shared with the police department. It also broke down that the information sharing between the schools had to go through the SROs and not regular police officers. So the SROs are the only ones communicating with the school officials on a daily basis about school activity and things that are relevant. So I just want to touch upon how things have changed over the years. Maybe I show my age, but that's a big change. The, I also want to talk about the Mass Chiefs of Police Safety Guide. Several years ago, when I got on the committee for the Mass Police Chiefs, we, as a committee, met and I said, geez, we're always working on standardized laws, use of force. So as a committee member, we put together a guideline for all the police, for all the school districts in the Commonwealth, driven by the Mass Chiefs, to build a safety guide looking at the district, looking at the buildings, looking at the parking lots, looking at the classrooms, and identifying every aspect between threat assessment, access control, and building a checklist for each school. So we use that guide on a regular basis. I meet monthly with the team statewide, and the Mass Chiefs has also brought in now superintendents to build our executive committee so that way the information between the police department is being directly fed to the administrators of the school that can then trickle down. So that way, we're speaking one language when we talk about school safety. And lastly, there's five things what we have to have and what we do on a regular basis, and it's called collaboration, assessment, prevention, mitigation, and response. There are 75 different theories between FBI, Secret Service, Homeland Security, State Department. Our guide looked at the best of the best, formulated those resources to build the guide that's used and reviewed every single year in Massachusetts by all the police chiefs and superintendents. So I just wanted to give that a little overview. So when we, when we kick off school safety, when we talk about how we keep our schools safe, as Dr. Burdles mentioned, what happened today, that's, that's low on, on the poll. We don't want to get there. Really, it's about prevention. Prevention is where, where we win the day. So that's where we put everything we can all the time, is collecting information, communicating. And I'll let Sergeant Allen take over and discuss the prevention part that the police department is doing on a regular basis.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
Going to have to push that voice.
Yes. I'm sorry, I'm a little sick too, so if it's coming out a little squeaky, I apologize. So when we, as a unit, look at prevention when it comes to school safety, we kind of broke it down into a few different categories that I'm going to run through. And again, in the interest of time, I might run through some of these pretty quickly, so please, any questions, jot them down. We're happy to, always happy to talk about these things further. So first of all, just starting with infrastructure, obviously, the schools have a significant amount of cameras. We were able to work with IT to get access to those cameras in our police station. So our station officer room, which is manned 24/7, we have access to all of the school cameras. So if our station officer were to see something suspicious on the cameras, we would obviously act on that. Similarly, if something was called in, we would have immediate access to be able to go to that exact area on the map within the school to see what's going on so we can better deploy our resources. Other than that, we have kind of an annual checklist as we go into the school year. That's well underway. We're actually, I think, already almost done, but we check every single panic alarm in every building. We have our entire patrol division check their FOBs. They have access to every single building in the district. We have them check it on not just the main door, but every single door to make sure that they have unrestricted access in case there was an incident. And then, other than that, we are also doing 24/7 checks of the school buildings themselves. So it's not just during the day. It's not just the SROs that are consistently present in the buildings throughout the course of their duties. It's the day shift that's driving by, the evening shift, the midnight shift. They're looking for suspicious activity. We practice door discipline, so I'll admit that's one of my pet peeves if I'm ever driving through the school and I see a back door, maybe one of the maintenance guys left it open. I'm closing that, I'm letting the principal know, it's, it's being addressed immediately. So again, as far as the security of the actual buildings, we take that very seriously. We do a lot to address that. Outside of that, we, we like to try to help facilitate trainings in the schools. Obviously, we as police officers do a significant amount of training around these incidents, and the lieutenant's going to talk more about that. But we were able to help bring Synergy 911, which is that third-party company that was referenced earlier, who comes in, they do the training. A lot of people might be familiar with the Run, Hide, Fight model or the Alice model. They have a very similar model where they come in and they do not just an educational piece with the staff, but they, they have the staff do a hands-on, practical, and kind of go through the motions so that everybody fully understands what they can expect of themselves if, if that moment ever did come. Apart from that, we've obviously also collaborated with the school around the new SRPs that they're using. We worked with the schools to connect them with the I Love You Guys organization, which I'm happy to explain that. So it was founded by a set of parents who, that I Love You Guys was the last message that they received from their child before they were lost to a school shooting. So again, it's a very, they take it very seriously. Earlier, when Dr. Burdles was referencing, the fact that this is the, the highest tier, they take all of the best practices and national standards, they compile it into one, and that's, that's what they use, that's what they promote, and that's what we're adopting as a district now. Again, small changes from what we were practicing before, but we're always evolving, we're always trying to stay on the up and up. Other than that, we obviously participate and support the fire department with fire drills. We support the transportation department with the bus evacuation drills. Pretty much, if there's anything going on at the schools, the SROs like to get in on it. So if it's assisting those other departments, we're doing that. We also regularly do our Rally Point evacuation drills every year, but as Dr. Burdles mentioned, they have invited us to help conduct some lockdown drills as well so that we can really get the students involved, which we're very much looking forward to being able to do. We also do a great bit with education and outreach, and that's kind of, that's one of the more important pieces to me. I think our clinician, Christina LaRose, is here, and she's going to speak to the mental health piece that goes into everything that we're talking about more. But for me, I, I see the presentations that we do within the schools as being effective on two fronts. Number one, it gets our SROs in front of the students. Every single time we're able to get into the building and we're able to be more of a familiar face to the students, that's a plus for us. I can't tell you how many times it's made a difference for me if I have a child who's been victimized or even a child who's committed a offense against another, when they see me showing up to their house or me showing up to a scene and I hear, hey, I know you, you're the, you're the cop that works in my school. It, it makes a tremendous difference. So just having the SROs in the building and engaging with the students at that educational level is hugely important for us, and we're grateful to be able to get in the schools and do that. The other piece is we're able to get out a lot of information to the kids. So for example, our elementary schools, we do bus and pedestrian safety presentations every single year. For our middle schoolers, as I'm sure you can imagine, the hot-button issues are social media and online safety, but also juvenile accountability. And what we try to teach the kids is, we don't want you to take these privileges, go online using social media. We don't want you to be victimized. So we talk about scams. We talk about not sharing photographs of themselves or private information. But we also teach them, we don't want But we also teach them, we don't want you to be an offender either. So, we talk about the seriousness, the consequences, and the juvenile accountability that they can expect. And we also run them through a lot of case examples where I, we sometimes play a little game with them called, Can Sergeant Allen Find It? And we'll give them examples of different Snapchats and things like that, and the answer is always, yes, we can find it. But yeah, so I, again, I could go on and on. We have very strong collaborations in place with the schools as far as our Handle With Care program. I know I've spoken about in years past where we were able to share information. Again, to the chief's point, it's a very limited scope, but it's in the interest of, especially when it's in the interest of safety, we are able to communicate certain things with the schools, whether it's for safety reason or just for the well-being of the child. If we want to give the school a heads up, hey, this child might need a little extra support, care, and attention, you know, please handle them with care at this time. We have that in place. So, again, before I go too far down the road of talking about mental health, addressing it, and the role that it plays in this critical incident topic that we're discussing, I'm going to turn it over to our clinician, Christina.
Thanks, Sergeant Allen. So, yes, I've been with Foxborough Public Safety for almost three years now, and it's just been a pleasure to work with everybody, including within the school district. Just to echo what Sergeant Allen says, I think it's a beautiful model that we have with the SROs, being able to go out unseen with them and having that rapport already built in has made such a difference in my role. So, I work collaboratively with the SROs. At times, we'll do follow-ups. We might do a well-being check if it's warranted, where I can offer support, clinical guidance. We can decide the best level of care for them. Do they need to go to the hospital? Is there an outpatient program we can provide, or just some information to the parents or the child? At times, I might be collaborating when appropriate with the school in terms of the guidance counselors or maybe meeting with a student in the schools at times. Additionally, I might be going out, let's say it's a 911 emergency where we're having a serious mental health emergency in Riverside is our mobile crisis team. At times, they're awfully busy, they cover a lot of towns. We prefer if Riverside can respond because they have a great juvenile division where they can do lots of follow-ups and offer some of their own resources and information, but I will be going with the schools, checking with the SROs if there is a mental health emergency. That being said, I'm also available for consultation, so we have a great collaboration between the schools and the guidance counselors where I can share information about different resources that I'm aware of, different programs that might be coming up. We are actually looking to hire an additional clinician on the team, at least part-time, so that might help with some of the additional follow-ups for resources specific to substance use, but also mental health. I think this summer, you know, we've performed a lot of different follow-ups to make sure that families have had the resources that they need while their children aren't in school. So, we're working closely with the YMCA, working closely with the community center to make sure that everybody's getting what they need. Recently, I've gone through a national training for behavioral threat assessment where it's a master trainer program through the Homeland Security. So, I'm also available for consultations and to work collaboratively when we're talking about risk. You know, essentially, I'm also here for after-hours response, so if the school's no longer in session and where kiddos are having a hard time at home, or parents are, you know, concerned about their child's welfare, that's usually when I get called out, either with the fire department or with the police. I might send a message to the SROs, just letting them know I was involved. The SROs can send a message to the school for Handle With Care. But I just wanted to thank everybody for all the collaboration, and I'm always available for any questions that anybody might have if anybody needs resources.
Thank you, Christina.
Thank you.
So, that was what we call the prevention part, and obviously, the threat assessment part. That is probably an eight-hour breakdown of how that is used, how it's used within the school department. Christina is actually now a certified instructor, so she can take that skill set and actually bring it into the schools and certify anybody in the school to meet that standard and be recognized as being an assessor under the... Is that by the FBI, correct?
Homeland Security.
Homeland Security. So, instead of us trying to find that training, which we did two years ago with all the, with our teams down in Onset, we now have an onsite instructor. So, as people change or they come and go within the schools, we can maintain that on our teams. So, part two on this presentation is the actual critical incidents. These are the incidents when they're ongoing, and we're going to talk today about, well, what is the police department capable of doing? So, as you know, the police department is a little unique because we run events on a regular basis in town. We run events, as the incident commander of those events, and my staff playing supervisory roles at the largest outdoor venue in New England, we're very familiar with a critical incident, how to run an event, unified command, and reaching out to our partners if something were to happen. So, I consider the school day an event. Every single day, when school's ongoing, we have hundreds of kids going to school. That event is ongoing. We sometimes have incident that occur, incidents, hopefully, none, but we have an incident occur while the event is going on. So, the event, the school day, doesn't cease for some of these incidents. What we have to do is, we have to get the information, we've got to manage the scene, use our resources, and make sure we mitigate it, but at the same time, just don't shut down and freeze. So, that happens. That happens with medical responses in schools. Maybe there's an altercation, maybe there's a fight, there's an unwanted party, there's something happening in the parking lot. So, we're doing that on a regular basis, and we're very well-versed in how to do it and how to work within our agency of defining who is the incident commander, how we relinquish authority, and then how do we push it out and mitigate it. So, I just wanted to give people, everybody, and just an overview. That is, you know, that's, again, that's another eight-hour class of how we would delineate duties, but we do that on a regular basis, and we bring that to the schools. Lieutenant Chamberlain is going to talk about what the capabilities are of the Foxborough Police Department if we were to have a critical incident at one of our schools.
Thank you. I'll just talk quickly about the critical incidents and how talented and how lucky you guys are able to patrol force in Foxborough. And Chief Grace is always pushing technology. I think we're the first department to have body cams, the first department to have tasers, we have drones. If something new, he's going to buy it. We've got ballistic shields now. If you remember in Uvalde, in Texas, they wouldn't go into the school, they couldn't have a shield. We have 12 shields. Every one of our patrol cars has a ballistic shield that could stop a rifle. Some of the other stuff he's done is, he's upgraded all our firearms. We now have optics. And just how much training the patrol shifts has had, this year alone, they had 768 hours of firearms training alone. Last year was 1,200, we'll probably reach that number again, because we have our winter calls coming up. Some of the other stuff he's authorized is Miami SWAT team has come up and trained us. They trained the patrol shift in barricaded subjects, how to use the shields, room clearing, how to put on tourniquets, medical trauma. This is also backed up by our first responder training, so everyone's tactically, I think we've given, we've given out like three lifesaving awards probably in the last week for what officers have done just on patrol. So, they're very qualified to render medical aid to anyone before a fire gets there. Another bonus is we're part of MetroLEC. It's a regional consortium of 46 towns and sheriff's departments. So, if we need resources, they're all based south of Boston, they'll help us, we help them. That gives us access to SWAT teams, search and rescue, child abduction teams, crisis negotiators. If you're in a small town, you can't prepare for everything, but having the resources, we can bring in hundreds of people. We have the state police barracks up on Route 1. They have children in the schools. They want to help, they'll stop and help us too, so. Just in our closing, the dispatch center, Semrec. Years ago, you'd call 911, you would go to Framingham Barracks, maybe to a Foxborough police officer in this building, the old station answered the phone. Now, it goes to a regional center. Their technicalities are so good that when they're trying the 911 calls, it was telling them exactly what room they were calling from at the high school. So, they also have a system of emergency alert where they could put an area out, say the high school here, anyone's cellphone that comes in there, we'll get an alert on that, which is different than the reverse 911, which you have to subscribe to. They also can patch in our drone or helicopter footage to our command staff, and they also, we have an app on every officer's phone that shows every room, power, electricity at all the schools there. So, it's their fingertips to find anything to shut off, so. That's just a quick, brief, what our patrol division can do.
Thank you, Lieutenant. So, step three is, as we break through or we progress, would be if we were to ever have a critical incident, obviously, lifesaving, ending the threat, but now we're talking reunification. How do we manage? How do we manage the phone calls, the text messages, the parents, everybody rushing to the school? Obviously, that's part of our incident command model, and we won't get into exactly all the details of that plan, but it's already built, locations have already been designated, the MOUs are already in place, so we have that. But MJ is going to talk about how we train for this and how we, what we've done to make us better at this, because it will be chaos. We are very clear, it will be chaos, so our job is to manage the chaos. It can't be, after an incident, you can't be learning the play during the game. You have to have played it and practiced it, and MJ is going to talk about that, what we've done.
Sure. Briefly, I'm going to go over the standard reunification method, which we were trained in last April by the I Love You Guys Foundation. It was designed to provide school districts and emergency responders with a proven structured process for safely reuniting students with their guardians after a critical incident. Why does this matter? Without an SRM, so the standard reunification method, the chaos and emotional strain of an incident can escalate, undermining both safety and accountability. A well-prepared plan ensures an orderly, calm, and responsible reunification, safeguarding a chain of custody for each and every one of our students. Key components of this plan, we, like Chief had mentioned, we have a pre-designated reunification site, which obviously has to be separate from where an incident is occurring. We have clearly defined roles and within the training, such roles such as greeters, runners, student staging, parent check-in, the list goes on and on. There's many stakeholders involved in this training. We have, the parent check-in process is a little more in-depth with being able to get identification, because we want to make sure that the person picking up their student belongs to that person, and it's not, you know, we don't want any more chaos than there already is. And communication, as we know, communication is important. Timely updates will be provided to families via a pre-established messaging system and public, by our, you know, whether it's the schools or the police or us working collaboratively. Successes of this model, it's rapid mobilization of trained staff. So, having many stakeholders from transportation, technology, school, police, fire, DPW, all of these people are involved in this training, we're ready to go and we know our roles when this, if this were to happen, which we hope never does. Effective use of signage and crown management, as Chief had alluded to, working with the stadium, we have a little bit of more success with that, I should say, because we are doing that on a weekly basis with stadium events. Strong collaboration with law enforcement and emergency services, and minimal confusion among parents due to clear communication. As we know, communication is key, and we will get out any information we can when it is necessary. Certain challenges that we know we're going to run into with the type of reunification is initial delays in parent arrival due to traffic congestion. As you can imagine, if a critical incident were to happen, there's going to be a lot of congestion, there's going to be a lot of traffic. So, we know these are challenges going into it, so we know we need to work towards that. Occasional breakdowns in communication and technology, Wi-Fi, cell phones, we know, we've heard from other incidents, that that stuff just won't work when we're in an incident like that. It just, there's too much traffic and it just, it won't work. Need, and then, at some points, there's going to be guardians that lack proper identification. This isn't to say that we're not going to give your child to you, but we need to make sure that we're doing our due diligence, and it may delay a little bit in reunifying your student with their loved ones. Lessons learned and what we can improve on, we need to make sure that we keep this reunification practice and drills in annual type of training. We have to do dry runs, we need to make sure that we are prepared. I'd rather be over-prepared than not be prepared at all. Need for backup communication, so we use radios if our cell phones aren't working. We need to be able to have paper lists, rosters, so that's where technology comes in. Transportation will need to, you know, be able to bus students from an incident to the reunification site. So, many stakeholders involved, we need to make sure that we are ahead of the game in thinking about this and preparing for this. And then, always ensure that there's more signage for language support for non-English speakers. All these things, we don't want to say, well, we should have been prepared. Recommendations going forward, like I mentioned before, just sticking to having all the stakeholders involved in annual reunification drills, and then, we can purchase reunification kits to provide a smoother experience. So, that would just entail, you know, signage of what your role is, traffic vests, and just having a smoother experience with an event of a reunification where we know where everyone's going, what their role is, and where they're going to be. They have kits that kind of make that a little easier transition. And that's really it for reunification.
Thanks, MJ. So, as you can see, the first three were really talking about critical incidents. This is kind of like the meat and potatoes, we talk about school safety. These are the worst days of our lives. These are like we have to prepare for. This is the what-if. This is what we have to be real about, and we have to be honest with ourselves. It could happen, we have to make sure we're in the best position to succeed, but most importantly, we do everything to prevent. That's what we live by, that's what we lose sleep over, and that's how we train. When I talk about training, obviously, the state guidelines for police officers meets a standard through the MPTC and what we offer for training. On a regular basis, we go far and above our training mandates, especially with the de-escalation and the use of force and active shooter training. Within the town, we've been fortunate, where Schneider Electric's been vacant for two years, we get insurance waivers, and we've been running SIMS training, which is essentially you're getting shot at and it hurts, training, decision-making under stress, so that way you can then, under a real scenario, it isn't your first time. We run that on a regular basis, as the lieutenant said, we took it to new level involving shields, saving, changing our optics, being able to run and shoot, use one hand, you don't have to close one eye, the optics lets you shoot, all sorts of dynamic training that hasn't even, isn't even a standard in Massachusetts yet that we do. But the SROs themselves meet a whole new level as part of the MOU and the state mandate. They require a whole list of additional training above and beyond, and I'll let Officer Godino talk about the training that they receive in preparation to being with the kids in Foxborough.
Evening. So, it's well-known that Chief Grace makes safety and security of our schools of top priority, and his commitment is clear in the investment he makes in the school resource officer unit. Each SRO receives roughly 200 hours of training annually, exceeding the minimum requirements. Minimum requirements are 40 hours for a police officer and then additional 16 hours for a school resource officer. But again, that's about three times as much training hours right there. This level of professional development not only ensures our SROs meet the standards to maintain our post-certifications as police officers, but also keeps us current and fully certified as school resource officers. Again, to be a school resource officer, there's a dual certification. We are certified police officers, and we also certified school resource officers through the MPTC. Just an overview of some of the professional development efforts we completed over the past year. Again, we've completed 40 hours of in-service training. We attended a 40-hour national conference, which I'll get to in a minute. There's a 16-hour SRO in-service that we attend every year. There's an additional 16-hour Mass Juvenile Police Association training that we attend every year. Again, firearms training, CPR training, annual trainings, active shooter rescue task force. Couple weeks ago, we attended a rescue task force training with Hope Dale PD, and that teams up the police and the fire departments for rescue efforts during a critical incident. Restorative justice training, de-escalation techniques, juvenile law updates. We've attended roundtables and tons of, so many webinars, we'll be here all night trying to explain them. But some other trainings to note that we've attended, obviously, the National Center of Missing and Exploited Children, NACMEC. They hosted a Train the Trainer course for two of their platforms. One of the platforms is Kids Smart, which is a child safety program that educates families about preventing abductions, empowers kids to make, practice safer behaviors. Also, NetSmart's platform, which is an online safety education program, it provides age-appropriate videos and activities to help teach children to be safer online with the goal of helping children to become more aware of potential online risks and empowering them to prevent, to help prevent victimization by making safer choices on and offline. These presentations and trainings are also available for parents and students. We're going to utilize the trainings that we went to, the open house is coming in September at the Ahearn. We're going to be presenting at the open house. I've talked to Principal Fraser about that. Seifer Schools Together also offered a Train the Trainer, which presents, which is to present to parents and caregivers on raising digitally responsible youths, and it covers social media awareness, digital citizenship, and cyberbullying. Again, in July, the SROs attended- Again, in July, the SROs attended the Nazaro Conference in Grapevine, Texas. While we were there, we were able to network. You know, networking during the conference obviously gives us the opportunity to meet and connect with other school resource officers from around the country. These conversations allow us to share ideas, compare strategies, and learn how other communities approach school safety and student engagement. It's a chance to exchange best practices, discuss challenges, and bring home new insights that strengthen our own programs here in Foxborough. Again, here in Massachusetts and especially Foxborough, I can say we are very fortunate to enjoy a strong collaborative partnership between our police department and the schools. Here, we are trusted members of the school community, working closely with the staff and the students to promote safety, support learning, and build meaningful relationships. This level of integration is not common nationwide. I can tell you for sure, many of the SROs we spoke to struggled to gain access to the schools or earn the trust of administrators. The level of integration that we have stands out as one where SROs and the administrators truly work hand-in-hand for the benefit of the entire community. Just to recap, some of the training sessions that we attended at the Nazaro National Conference, and here's a list of some of the classes that we attended for that week, but they're going to hit home with the current events, too. Preparing for anonymized threats, what SROs need to know, law enforcement investigation checklist for school threats, safeguarding our school communities against dangerous threats, holistic safety, school safety, creating a safe and supportive K-12 community, the four pillars of school safety, prevent, prepare, respond, and recover, an instructor's guide to raising digitally responsible youth, digital footprints along the pathways to violence, school safety leadership in a behavioral threat assessment world that was taught by Dr. Bernie James, resilience response policing trauma, and rethinking crisis drills. Just one thing I can point out here as training lined up for this year coming forward, we're hoping to host and attend Nazaro Advanced SRO Course, which is a course that is 24-hour block that advances our SRO knowledge and skills as a law enforcement officer, informal counselor, and an educator. And then, just to touch on the last part here, is just our ongoing meetings and collaborations. We collaborate basically monthly with the Norfolk County DA's Youth and Community Unit. We also collaborate with the Norfolk County Juvenile Court, where they get together all the SROs and prosecutors that handle juvenile offenses, and we see what trends are emerging in different areas. We also have communicated and collaborated with Gillette Security and Team Ops Security of how to handle juvenile encounters better. We also check in usually weekly with the YMCA, the Boyd and Library Team Directors, and the Cumberland Farms staff. I call it the Foxborough 500. Usually when I leave the Ahearn School at dismissal, I make the rounds, because I know where all the kids are going to head to the YMCA, and then a whole bunch of them are going to head to the Cumberland Farms, and then finally, the rest of them usually end up at the Boyd and Library. So, I've nicknamed it the Foxborough 500, because I like to make sure the kids see that we're checking in in those spots, and also gives me a chance to talk to, you know, the stakeholders at all those locations. So, with that, sorry if I sped talk a little bit, but with that, I'll turn it off to Sergeant Allen.
So, this is, this is the last part, and this is like what we call community engagement. Obviously, we're talking about a lot of issues that are not ideal, but they're real, but a huge part of the SRO program, a huge part of community policing, and a huge part of being a police officer in a community, is working with your community and working with your kids. I mean, I can tell you, Career Day is awesome, when I get to go off to high school and we get to talk about what we do and if you're interested in this field and fill the room, maybe make some dynamic videos and show some really, and you know, we have kids who are now off to college and some of the programs and criminal justice majors going in the military who said, "Hey, that was awesome, and maybe I'm going to be coming back." So, I love doing that part. And the whole team in general does it, and Sergeant Allen is just going to talk briefly about some of the things that we do.
Thank you Chief. And again, so I know we're pressed for time, I'm going to try to keep it brief.
No.
But, the first thing that I'm just going to mention quickly was, is about the youth academy that we did. So obviously, over the summer, we had our second-ever youth police academy. It's a two-week program. The SROs are really the ones who brought it to life last year, when we had our first year. First year, we had 30 students and a few of our officers who volunteered to serve as instructors. After the first year and how well it went, we had over 40 kids for our second year and I almost had to cut officers from being able to instruct, just because we had so many officers who wanted to be a part of that program, because they saw not only how cool it was and part of it might have been because they wanted to go do paintball with the kids just as much as the kids did, but it really is a very cool and unique opportunity for our officers to be able to engage with the kids at a very different level, outside of school, where they're in our house essentially. But to the Chief's point, I just want to say that the community engagement that we do and the community policing that we do with the kids is, it's as much, it's as important for us as SROs as it is for the kids. This is not an easy job, and I'm not going to sit here and talk about policing being hard, but our SROs are dealing with crimes against children and crimes committed by children, day in and day out. It's always tragic, it's very difficult. And so I can't say enough how meaningful it is for us to be able to get into our elementary schools and just go sit and read a book with kids. So again, we're very grateful to the schools for the collaboration that we have with them and we keep getting invited more and more to come do things and we love it. We're always adding new forms of engagement. Again, we've been doing High Five Fridays for quite a while. Some of you guys may not have recognized Officer Joe without his chef's hat, because he's always slinging pizzas to the kids on Fridays at the Ahearn. But, other than that, you know, a couple of years ago, we just added in our participation in something called Ruby Bridges Day. So, some of you guys may not know, but Ruby Bridges was one of the first black children to be allowed to go to a desegregated school. She had to be escorted by federal officers just to be able to do that and get past all of the bigotry that was outside of the building. So, we're very proud to participate in that with our schools and walk hand-in-hand with our staff members and our kids to commemorate the importance of that day. Another thing that we're going to be adding this year, for example, is the International Bullying and School Violent Prevention Day. So that's going to be another opportunity. We just, we continue to learn more things. As our SRO said, when they go to these national conferences and they hear about all these really cool ideas that these other SROs are doing, we just want to keep adding it. And I'll be honest, any, almost any time we bring something to the schools, they're always on board to bring us in or to hear us out. So again, we're very grateful for that. I know I mentioned some of the educational things that we do around the school, the presentations for the kids, it's very important. Another thing we're going to be rolling out this year that we've been wanting to do for a while is getting into the high school and working with their health classes to get in on some of the lesson planning around substance abuse, around physical abuse, healthy relationships, consent, some really, really important topics that we recognize is very important for our high schoolers to know. You know, apart from that, I'll just say this, I mentioned this to the new staff that was coming on board, I think it was last week when they had their new staff orientation. I can't speak for every police department in the Commonwealth or every police department in the country, but in Foxborough, the schools are very, very personal to us as police officers, as a department. I personally have siblings that work in the schools, I have family that attend the schools. I would say probably more than half of our officers either attended the schools and still love visiting some of their old teachers, or they have children in the schools.
I'm running out of teachers, me and I, okay?
I'm still glad. But again, I just, I can't stress enough how personal the safety of these kids are to us. Everybody knows Foxborough is a tight community. When it comes to safety from the police perspective, there's nothing more precious than the safety of children. And for us, again, it is personal. These are our kids, these are our family members that are in these buildings. So I just, I want to stress that, it's important that we have the partnership with the school so that we can get in and do what we need to do. But more than that, more so on the police side of things, one of the main reasons why we like to show up here every year and talk about this is because we want the word to get out. We want everybody to know what we do here in Foxborough. We want everybody to know that it is personal and that we are prepared. And that's what they'll be met with.
So as you can see, the school presentation isn't the Chief coming in, talking to the Board, it's a buy-in from all the officers within the agency. They really do buy in, it really is part of our mission goal on a regular basis. But we always know, we can do more. We also, we're never complacent and we got to always push to do more. We've never, we're only as good as yesterday. So, we never stop. And I can tell you right now, out of all the presentations, this is the best room I've seen in three years. But we have residents here, we have moms and dads here, their kids are going to school next, you know, Tuesday, hopefully they can get up because their schedule's all messed up. But having the buy-in, the door is always open at the police department, you walk through the door, we're 24/7. I mean, I answer emails, phone calls, all the time, I live in town. It's, 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 it's hard to explain, but it's part of our DNA. So, I always say, no question's a bad question. Like, we get challenged, we're not going to be perfect, but we're going to continue to thrive and try to meet the highest expectations all the time. So, I guess, if the Board has any questions?
Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you. I've been sitting at this table for five years and this is hands-down the most thorough, well-thought-out presentation that you've given, so I see...
I'm kind of hurt, that means...
Well, no. To your, to your point, I see you trying to just top what you've done in the past.
They want to own parts, they want to make things better.
Yes, yes.
Can we, can we, is our motto.
Thank you. And, you know, I certainly feel from where I'm sitting that you guys did a great job, so I appreciate all the thoughtfulness and work that went into this. I'll stop talking.
So, again, thank you. I appreciate the collaboration between the school and the police. I attended the training, and I'm glad that you spoke a little bit about the training, because I thought attending the training was very powerful. Again, the hands-on experience, that was kind of, that was, it was interesting, but it was like, it was also very telling, like now we're training how to handle it, you know, just this is how we do it, and to think outside the box and to constantly keep going. Also, the example of the 911 call, like again, one of the officers called 911, it pinged immediately to where exactly his location in the high school and said exactly where he was. These are things that we didn't know about, and I'm glad that you spoke about these things and I'm glad that you're speaking about all the issues that are going on now. Again, grateful for the amount of SROs that we have. I know other schools don't have that, and I'm glad how immersed you guys are in the school. And I've had kids in the school, and just the evolution that I've seen year after year after year, like, I appreciate the communication that you've given us and that you've told us all about this, but again, next year, it's not like you're going to come and be like, "Well, I told you everything I know." You're going to have a whole new set of information, you are constantly moving forward, you're constantly changing, and I really, really appreciate that part of it. Like, every time something happens, you learn from it. Every time you see something new or something that happens somewhere else, we're learning from those experiences, and I really do appreciate that. And I appreciate you allowing me to attend that training. Everything was very eye-opening. Thank you for being so communicative here and relaying all the information that you have. I hope this answers a lot of the questions that a lot of people have about our, you know, the security that we have, the schools. Again, you've done a lot and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Want to thank you guys for the community. Community is like a big thing for me personally, and I think that the police do such a great job being members of the community. I see so many of you around town all the time, some of you coach football with me and, or, it's, it's so important in a small town like this where the police officers are stakeholders within the community. It's refreshing to know that half the police force has kids that are in the schools and they, you know, I mean, just like any other position in terms of, having the actual skin in the game is an important thing. And I think your organization does a great job with it. I did have a question for Christina, or is it Christine?
Christina, thank you.
Christine, thank you. You mentioned where you can be reached out for the social, who reaches out to you to sort of set up engagement for a student?
Sure, so it could look a lot of different ways. Typically, if it's an emergency, we're calling, going through 911, and the Regional Dispatch Center determines, you know, if they're going to page me or the police can request my response. Sometimes the SROs are asking SAMREC to page me out. But then, at times, the school itself might reach out and say, "I'd like to collaborate, I have, you know, we're looking for some resources for a particular topic." So, that might happen. I will take calls from community members as well, so, you know, I might be consulting over the phone about best levels of care or who to go to if you need any resources. So I'm available by email. My email is C.Larose, my last name, L-A-R-O-S-E, at foxboroughma.gov. You can reach me through the business line, and I have a direct line, I can leave my business cards on the back table as well, so people can feel free to reach out. So it kind of looked like a lot of different ways. I might also go out with the fire department, so if there's a kid call and it didn't reach to the police level and the fire department thinks my services might be beneficial, I might go out with them. So it really kind of looks like a lot of different ways. I'm sorry, it's not quite streamlined, but I like to keep a foot in all the doors.
Well, that's good. I just, I want to make sure that that was out there so that parents know, because a lot of times, especially if it's your oldest child, you're going in with a kid that starts traversing all these things, that you just may not be aware of how to handle it, and that extra level of support to know that they could possibly reach out to you is something that could be really helpful.
Absolutely.
I mean, I'm many years away from middle school, but I'm already scared about my kids.
It is scary.
And that's really kind of how the program was built, is having boots on the ground, because there's nothing worse than call for a referral, call your insurance, call your primary, can't get told six weeks out before you can find someone. A licensed profession with Christine is right there, you know, immediate to answer some of those questions, safety plans, things like that.
Exactly. You don't know what you don't know. So it's like, someone to reach out to for it.
Scary world, and the SROs are doing great. They, you know, they'll put cases, we all share like inboxes on our database, and they'll put cases in my inbox and say, "Hey, I just think, you know, we brought you up, but I just think, you know, if you can give mom or dad a call or, you know, whoever's caring for the child a call and just talk about different resources." So I'll review cases, too, that come through that way, and I'll make some proactive calls as well.
Right. And the other thing, and it's been touched on a few times, we're not really, I think we take for granted the advantage that we have for our town, because most towns our size do not have the type of access that having the stadium here affords us and the funding that comes in for, and like you mentioned, I'm glad you talked about the difference in training, because that was something they mentioned during the synergy 911 training last week, was that usually these incidents or these mass, whatever they're called, like the situations, not even like the serious incidents, but just in general, the crowd control.
The weather or a gas leak, just the chaos.
Most towns deal with that a handful of times every year. You guys deal with it 40 or 50 times a year. So, with that comes the extra training, and it really is something that we may not realize as community members on a day-to-day basis, but it is actually something that was very evident during the training that we had. So, thank you.
You're a junior guy, let's go Nick.
Thank you. Great job. Thank you for everything you guys all do. I think, I'll echo everything my fellow committee member said. My question is on the education piece, so I know we talk about how we want to like educate the students and try to prevent things, but when things happen, I know, I was in the schools, rumors spread very fast, faster than you think. Has there been any thought on like, kind of talking to the kids after certain situations or incidents happen to make sure that the students are all on the same page rather than spreading rumors like fire, because they will spread rumors very fast?
Yeah, like my kids know before I do.
Yes, exactly, something exactly like that, when something happens in the school and for example, your kids know faster than the police chief of the town.
Yeah, that was a little bit of a joke on that part. But, in regards to like an after-action of a critical incident, I think that would be more of a controlled or of a perceived, it would depend on the threshold of what we're talking about. Are we talking about, you know, something that happened on Saturday night at a party and now all of a sudden it's starting to show its face? That's what we need, when we talk about school safety, we talk about the culture of the schools, that's everybody's job. That's every police officer, that's every faculty member, but it's also every parent. And that's where, if there's something out there, and it may not be like something that we're going to charge criminally, but we got to address, we got to know what it is. We got to get on it right away. So, in regards to, I don't know if that was directed towards the school, if the rumors are spinning around the halls, how does the school tackle it?
I would say that, you know, different situations that take place or rumors that go, they're going to be handled differently depending on, you know, what the circumstance is. It's, every, everything's unique, unfortunately.
Yeah, we got like public records law, we got... Yeah, we got like public records law, we got disclosures, we have juveniles involved, like, they, they handcuff us sometimes. We just can't say what we wanna say, 'cause we can't. Because, we can't, because it's, it's kids. It's a whole, it's a whole different playing, it's unlike, if someone's 18 and older and we have an incident in the center of town and it's, you know, a disaster, it's a car chase or, you know, we're even bound by what we can release, but once they get a, like, they get arrested, we're bound to release, we, we can release that information. We can't, we have to withhold some, we can't, if there's an investigation, we can't get into that part, but some basic information is allowed to be released under the public records law. With the juveniles, it really gets locked down, especially for their rights and their protection. You know, so, I don't, I don't know if we're answering your question. It's gonna be a case-by-case, but Taj?
If I can, so like I think the main, it's, to the chief's point, it's hard to control that, right? Kids are gonna talk to each other, it's gonna be a game of telephone. I've seen it happen a million times over. And the stories get twisted, they get portrayed different ways. The, I think one of the main anecdotes to that is just sending out that messaging of, "You have to tell a grown-up that you trust." That is, that is like the main point of all the presentations that we do, even at the elementary school level when we're talking about bus safety with the kids. That's really where we try to start imparting on the kids. If you see one of your friends acting unsafely on the bus, we don't want them to get hurt, we don't want your other friend to get hurt, we don't want you to get hurt, you have to tell someone because you're gonna be helping that person and your other friends. That carries on with the education outreach that we do at the middle school as well as the high school that we're planning on getting more into, but that is the biggest thing. Because we know, especially at that middle school age, that's where we see a lot of kids who are maybe engaging in behaviors online that they know are not good and they don't wanna reach out and they don't wanna tell anybody because they either feel embarrassed, they don't wanna snitch, they don't, they don't wanna be involved sometimes. Or sometimes they are minimizing it. So, really, I, I can tell you personally, like when I, or Officer Godino, when we're delivering those presentations to the kids, that's another part of why it's so important for us to be face-to-face with those kids, because we want them to see our faces and say, "Listen, if you are in one of these situations and you need help, reach out to us, we'll help you, even if you're the one who did the bad thing." So, that is really, I think, what we're trying to do because the sooner we get kids talking to a trusted adult, a teacher, us, a parent, whoever, as soon as it gets to us, we're taking action. Investigations begin immediately, proactive steps are taken, we, we wanna help and that's really what we're trying to get out to the kids, is that, like, the sooner you tell us, the better because we're gonna help you manage it. And that's, that usually, if we can get them to actually do that, we, that'll obviously, hopefully, help the rumor mill, but...
Thank you.
I'd also just jump in the, on the education side of things. We have building-based mental health teams, we have district-wide mental health team, our district-wide mental health team engaged in a training earlier today. It's our first three days of staff professional development day. They're well-trained. We ensure that our school counselors, our social workers, they're consistently meeting with our building administrators or assistant principals or principals. We, we have consistent conversations about how to support students, how to support student mental health and make sure that we're balancing student mental health and, and academics. So, throughout our district and every building, we have, we have highly-trained guidance counselors, we have a director of student services that is always making sure that our counselors, our social workers have access to the best training and the best support, best consultants that, that we can provide throughout the school year. So, it's not as though we, we wait for something to elevate to the level of, of engaging with our SROs. This is consistently something that we do, it's part of our training. We have, we have comprehensive social-emotional learning curriculum as well. Those lessons are happening in our classrooms throughout pre-K-12 as well. So, it's, it's not as though we're, we're waiting for things to elevate, to engage the SROs. It's a part of what we do. We support students socially, emotionally, and academically throughout the district.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you all. We appreciate it. We appreciate you and we appreciate what you all do every day. So, thank you. We're going to move on to the update on summer work and preparation for the opening of school.
Did we kill the schedule?
No. It's, it's great. It's great. Thank you very much. We really do appreciate all the information.
One of the things that they were talking about as we're kinda shifting here, I know that Meg had mentioned it as far as Sergeant Allen, I should say, mentioned on thinking about anti-bullying and everything. On November 6th, the national school safety, we're going to really focus on school safety and focus with different activities and partnering with the police and what we'll be doing in classrooms as well. One of the other things that I wanted to mention, and Mr. Hyer may mention this as part of the back-to-school registration process, is that our mass notification system that parents sign up for, for those alerts, it's, you know, the snow day, anytime that we have alerts that go out, you can have the app where you get the push notifications and that is our mass notification system. And if you have that, you can get those right on your phone as well. And the beginning of the school year is a great time to be able to have that reminder for folks if they have not downloaded the app in order to get those push notifications.
Well, thank you, Dr. Burdo. That's a, a good segue. I did, I did wanna remind people to download the School Messenger app. The School Messenger app is, is an app that you can download either through the Google Play Store or the Apple Store, the Apple App Store. The app will allow you to sign up for, for different notification preferences. Right in the app, you can see what we have for information on file for you. And then you can also set notification preferences in terms of if you wanna receive a text message, if you wanna receive voice calls, if you wanna receive emails, if you wanna receive push notifications. So, the other nice thing about the app is it, it gives you, it's like a feed, right? So, it's almost like a Facebook feed or a Twitter feed in terms of, it's one place to get all your communication. If you have students in multiple schools, it brings everything together in that one feed. You can see things that come from the district, whether it's from Dr. Burdo, so it's the services department sends out information, you'll get it all in the same place. So, it is, it's a convenient way to receive information and make sure that you're getting the information you need. Related to that, it's also a good opportunity to remind people, beginning of the year, we send out what we call SNAP codes. These are electronic codes. They allow you to go online and to update the contact information and your information that you have in terms of emergency contacts, your phone numbers, your cellphone numbers, your work contact numbers. Also, any custodial restrictions, health concerns, right? This is all really important information for us to help keep a student safe during the school day. So, it's really, really important that when you get this information sent home to you over the next week, that you go online and, and update that. And that information flows into the School Messenger system as well. I know our school resource officers and our Foxborough Police partners talked about reunification and some of those things. You know, in, in those cases, that information, right, is crucial that we have all the relevant contact information to reach out to people. All right. So, that's it. It's always an exciting time to come back every year and talk about the summer preparations for technology and welcoming back students and teachers. Really, this year, our, our team's been working on ensuring that we have smooth and well, well-ready technology environment for the upcoming school year. Over the last year, we've really begun to inform our practices and, and really shift from that fixed technology maintenance routine which we've had in place, which, which was waiting for the summer, right, to, to be able to do all of the technology updates and prepare everything for the school year, to a model that's more based on ongoing maintenance. We started our, our school preparations this year in April and May at the elementary schools. We're starting to work on updating our inventory and upgrading and refurbishing all of the student laptops that were in the elementary school classrooms. So, by the end of June this year, we had refurbished every laptop at the elementary level, you know, we were able to upgrade it to Windows 11, have all the latest security updates on it, the latest software, to have that equipment refreshed and ready to be working. And the reason that's important is because we have an enormous amount of technology and there, there just is not enough time over the summer. The summer's just too short to try to save all the maintenance that we have. And then two, in terms of the technology lifecycle, we're, we're constantly dealing with things, updates and patches that have, you know, safety and security concerns in terms of cybersecurity. We just can't wait, right? Those, those things are too critical to, to defer the maintenance on those. So, what we have is, you know, fewer large-scale type lab refreshes and projects like that and instead, we're moving to this continuous lifecycle. Lots of maintenance, including device imaging, device updating, and then refurbishing over the summer. So, over the summer, we refurbished over 1,500 student laptops. That's just an enormous amount of equipment to, in terms of logistics, right, in terms of collecting it, getting it updated, refurbished, and getting it back. One of the benefits of this is we're, we're finally going, we're getting to a place where we're getting into a predictable replacement cycle, which is allowing us to, to better forecast around budgeting. Current replacement cycle we're just implementing this year is, will allow us to replace one student grade level per grade band of laptops per year. So, one at the elementary level, one at the middle school level, one at the high school level. This is gonna make a significant impact in terms of the readiness of our equipment moving forward. So, with that said, we also did a history lab upgrade at the high school, refreshed the, the high school, middle school loner laptop carts. We did a district-wide inventory audit on all technology equipment. We were able to network a number of digital displays that we installed last year, so they're all been upgraded and capable for wireless projection. We have more digital displays that we, we were able to order. We're working with our vendors right now to coordinate our principals, to coordinate the installation of those, so the installation of those will be going, ongoing throughout the fall. In terms of security, we replaced network video recorders, which house the security footage recordings for the security cameras that are in all the school buildings. And we did a number of software patches and updates of software. So, as I said too, you know, this past year, working with the school buildings, we really worked to refine our processes in terms of preparing for maintenance. This year, implementing a, a new device collection process at the middle school was very successful. It allowed us to really get ahead of that, again, that refurbishing process. So, we're having a lot of collaboration from students and parents, by letting parents know that we're gonna be collecting technology, asking them to have students clean the, the technology and have it ready to come into the building so that we can, we can inventory it. And then the middle school students were great. They, we had a, a collection process to the high school, sorry, the middle school where the students had come down. If they hadn't cleaned their equipment already, they were able to clean the equipment and then we were able to quickly visually check it and check it in the inventory, get it unassigned. And if any case, there was any missing equipment or damage, the students were able to leave and know what the consequences were for that right away. So, that resulted, again, in a streamlined process that allowed us to, to really get ahead of refurbishing process in years past. We would collect the devices and it would take two, three, or four weeks sometimes for us to get the equipment fully inspected and inventoried to get ready to refurbish. In this case, by the last day of school, everything was inventoried and ready to be refurbished. If it got turned and broken, it went in to a pile with like repairs, so we're able to get ahead and order parts and things like that, so we're able to get them in, get the devices fixed and turn them on. Some other just maintenance we do, we upgraded a, a number of wireless access points throughout the school district this year. The last couple of weeks, stress testing the wireless internet connections, making sure they're ready for teachers to come back, replaced a number of UPS batteries. This has, you know, both implications in terms of our computer operations and, and learning, but also for safety, right? This is equipment that keeps card access working, the doors, if we lose power, things like that, so that the buildings are, are safe and we have equipment. The cameras are on battery backup at the middle school and the high school, things like that continue to work even when we're in power. This week, our, over the whole summer really, our digital learning specialists have been working on training materials and presentations to work with teachers and supporting teachers. And this week, they welcomed new staff with new teacher orientation and over the last couple of days, welcoming staff back to the buildings, providing a number of professional In terms of our team, I'd like to thank, you know, our team, the technology team, really thank the support of the school committee, maintenance and custodial staff too. It's kind of like a fine dance throughout the summer, whether it's, you know, trying to coordinate maintenance, right, where there's waxing and stripping of floors, you know, trying to make sure that we can get everywhere we need to go and get everything done that we need to do. And maintenance department's always very supportive and helpful for us, both custodial maintenance. Over the next few weeks, our staff will be working extended hours in terms of making sure that teachers have the support that they need at the start of the school year, that, that we get off to a good, a good year. Again, it's really important for, for parents to update your information. In the next few days, you'll, you'll be getting information on how to do that. It's, it's really important to go through that process because what we'll find, what parents will find sometimes is you'll, you're able to see the information that's there. Maybe that there's a job you haven't worked at in five or six years and that's the, the daytime contact information you have on file, right? So, being able to see that and get an update really helps us have the information we need in a critical incident or just whether it's a snow call or any communication that needs to go out. Just to follow up to some of the conversation earlier, you know, Foxborough's always, always does more. And back to what the, the chief was saying in terms of, you know, can we do it, right? You know, in 2014, when I first came here, we implemented a district-wide telephone system. In, as part of the implementation of that system was enhanced 911 notification and internal responder capabilities. In 2020, federally, there were laws passed, the CARRY's Law and the Ray-Ban's Act, which requires that multi-line telephone systems meet certain specifications in terms of 911. I've reported on this a, a couple of times in terms of the iterations we've made to, being at the forefront of these regulations and really meeting these regulations much sooner than, than we need to. But our, our, under the CARRY's Law, like, for instance, if you pick up the phone, whether you need eight or nine for an, an external line, you dial 9911, right, or 911. If you dial 911, it's gonna go. So, you don't have to worry about if you dial eight to get an external line or nine. If you dial 9911, eight, 911, or 911, it's, it's gonna go. And I think as you heard today, under the Ray-Ban's Act, it's the dispatchable location. So, as you heard today, when they test call 911, it gives them the location within the building. And I've been working in public schools for just, just under 25 years now. And what I'll tell you is, I can't say how many times the police or fire would show up to a main office in a school building and the people in the office wouldn't know why, right? And that's because somebody in the gym called 911 and talked to the 911 dispatcher, but the address comes up and it, it comes up as the office. So, our 911 system, it is compliant with the laws. So, another component of the, the CARRY's Law is the internal notification plan. So, when somebody calls 911, for instance, from the high school gym, all the phones ring in the main office, every single phone rings at once. The first person that picks up the phone in the office can listen to the 911 call in progress. That allows that person to start an internal response. So, if the call is from the gym and it says that somebody fell and they think they broke, they broke their leg, the person in the office can hear that and then they can radio down to the nurse and ask the nurse to start moving to the gym. And then again, it may, it may result in a, a standard response protocol of a hold, right, where there's gonna be an ambulance or medical personnel coming in and it might be approaching class-changing time. And in order to facilitate that movement in the, in the hallway for an ambulance or medical personnel, you know, they might institute a hold, right? So, they're able to get that information in advance and then start those internal responses while the 911 call is still in progress, right? And then lastly, if you make a call out from, from one of our phones, if you call 911 out from the phone, the 911... out from the phone, the 911 operator, there's a, a phone number that's mapped to that, gets mapped to that phone, and the 911 operator, if you get disconnected, is able to call directly back. So in, in the past, if a 911 operator called back, it would go to the main office. And like we talked about, sometimes the main office would have no clue that somebody had called 911. This is not the case in Foxborough since, since 2014, right? They've had this internal notification capabilities. So, but we're, we're constantly, you know, at the forefront of technology, using technology to keep our buildings safe and to keep our students and, and school community safe. So I did want to just highlight some of that as well.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody.
Hi, Tony.
So we had a pretty decent summer. We got a lot done. We got all the floors and everything, everything taken out of classrooms. It's almost like a ongoing thing every summer. But we, we get all the floors nice and shiny, we get the carpets all shampooed, just furniture cleaned and disinfected. You know, we take it out, then we get it all washed up and throw it back in, and, and new furniture comes in, you put stuff together. We, we go in the bathrooms, you know, we got these new machines, we just, you know, you spray it right up, the Kyvac machines, you know, and, you know, got some, some new equipment, so that kind of makes the job even better. And, and I have to say, I got to thank the custodial staff because Dave, it's a, it's a hard time of the year, you know? You get a small window, and then, you know, you walk through there in like, in the middle of July, and you're kind of like, wow, how are you going to get this place done, you know? But they, they did a great job. And, and we do the stuff also, like the, the, all the filters, unit vents, rooftop units, we, you know, we change the filters. We do it four times a year anyway. But, you know, we will do it during the break and stuff like that. And, you know, replacing lights and whiteboards and removing and installing. Actually, this year, we did the, the Ahearn kitchen. So we, they epoxied the floor, so everything had to come out, dish machine, ovens, everything. But it really needed it, it hasn't been done since 2000. And got a few pieces of equipment in there too, also. And we, we kind of, kind of rehabbed it, you know, painted the walls, the floors, and so we got that, that really looks good. I mean, considering it's, you know, it's got, it's got its 25 years' worth. Also, we're in, we just finished the, the carpet today in the media center for the Ahearn. So we're going to start putting that together. We should have it pretty close together. It's just the books and all that's going to take time to get in there because we packed it right before school got out. And, and we do the, the usual stuff, the grease traps in the kitchen, the hood cleaning, you know, the annual fire signature testing and the ancil system testing, all that, just kind of, it's a routine thing that we have to do. And yeah, let's make a quick, we did the, the Martinelli Field Press Box. I know people are probably scared going up there, but we finally, we replaced all the rails, we secured it better, we replaced some of the stairs going up because it was getting a little, to the point that we got, we got that, we got all the, just finished the mulching for all the playgrounds this week. So we got 125 yards of that, got that all done. And just basically keeping it going. And that's basically it, you know, just striping some parking lots and you, I guess you can see it when you walk through the schools and...
Yeah, I just want to go back to the, I want to go back to the 125 yards of mulch because when they drop off a yard of mulch, it looks like a mountain, so you guys must have done a lot of work.
No, actually, I have a company comes, comes in and actually...
Oh, they do it?
They blow it on.
Oh, that's awesome.
Comes in these big trucks, very noisy, but...
Still, think about it, how much mulch that is.
Oh, yeah. Oh, well, a truck can only hold 20 yards, so it goes back quite a bit. But it's, it's great because they do it right and, you know, and I got some new pads coming too. I had to replace some of them. That's a lot of stuff, part of my problem is getting, receiving goods, you know, things have slowed down. And we're still going to do the offices over at the, the Ahearn. We got carpet to do the offices, but obviously we'll have to do that during the winter break and the spring break, whatever we can get done. But a lot of the stuff we weren't, you know, getting right away, so it's a little difficult. But I have to thank the staff and my maintenance staff and Kyle and everybody that's, you know, it takes the team. Without them, then I wouldn't be able to be able to do what I do.
You know, you guys do the, the work, and it's, it's hard work, but it's almost like it's invisible work. You come back to the school, and when the Wi-Fi works great, and when the school is nice and clean, like you don't see what actually goes into that happening.
Should have seen the cafeteria at the Ahearn two days ago.
I was going to say.
It was loaded with ovens and...
Yeah, no, it, it's crazy, and that's the work we don't see. So that's the value of what, of you guys coming and sharing this in-depth, you know, people just don't see what's going on. And you, you just come in and everything looks great.
It's like magic.
Yeah, it's like a magic wand, everything looks great. Well, it's not magic. Here's the magicians right here. You keep it going, so thank you very much.
We also completed the BDA system over at the Ahearn.
Oh.
Yes, we ended up finishing that up with, end of June.
Yes, that's a, that was another...
That's a huge security...
There was another public safety project, so the, the BDA is a bidirectional amplifier. So what that does is it ensures that the police and emergency responders, police and fire, that their two-way radios work everywhere in the building. So if there's a, a critical incident, I think it was Sergeant Allen had talked about, what, what post-incident data shows is that cell phone systems get overwhelmed, that they're very reliant on the two-way radios, that that, that's the mode of communication in a critical incident. So that bidirectional amplifier system makes sure that those radios work in the building, you know, if there's a critical incident, and there's, there's either EMS or police, fire, or a combination in the building.
We have three of them so far. We have it at the high school, Ahearn, and the borough.
Nice. Geez, thank you so much. I did have a quick question. This is going way back in your presentation, and if you covered this, I, I apologize. Would, would School Messenger be used in a critical incident, like reunification scenario? Would they use Messenger as one of the tools?
Yes, so, so the, we've had the School Messenger system, I think, since about 2015. School Messenger, it allows us to send emails, so that's our, you know, general flow of information. That's, most of the, the principals, Dr. Burdos, use that system to send out mass emails. Other components to that system is it's integrated with our website so that we're able to post emergency alerts directly from that system to the website as well, as well as sending text messages, voice calls, and post alerts to, potentially to, to social media even.
Okay.
So, but that system, I think just about everybody knows when they, they get the phone call for like canceled snow. So they don't just get it once, right? You, you don't just get it on your cell phone. A lot of us don't have home phones anymore, but at one point, you know, it would ring on my cell phone, it'd ring on my wife's cell phone, it'd ring on, on the home phone. So that system, it, it makes upwards of, you know, 5,000 to 7,000 calls when we do like a canceled snow, like a canceled day due to snow. And it, it takes somewhere in like six minutes or seven minutes. So yeah, so if that, in case of a reunification or any, any type of critical incident, you know, that, that is a, it's a primary tool for us to communicate, yeah.
Okay, that's important. We all know the back-to-school email and information can be, you know, those packets come home, it could be a lot, but...
Yeah.
It's really important.
It definitely is a lot of information. We're, we're sensitive to that, and that's why we did invest in the system, that it pre-populates your information, so hopefully if you don't have any thing to change, or you don't have to make any updates, that you can just hit next at the bottom of the page. And then also too, you know, when you're, when you're sending home paper forms and they're blank, it's like, what, what is in there, right? You're not, you're not sure this lets you see what we see? So, you know, again, you might not realize like, oh, I still have an old employer here, or an old phone number, or I got rid of my home phone number five years ago, I don't have a home phone anymore. Just even removing that information so that we have the most up-to-date information there. So, but we are sensitive to, it, it does take some time. If you do have multiple students in the district, if you fill it out for one student, you do have the opportunity to copy over contact information and things like that. Medical information won't copy over, right? Because that's specific to the student. But you do have that ability to copy over like your address information, all that information, again, if need to be, if you're filling it out for the first time.
And I would say that that's the question that comes up when somebody says, I didn't get your call, or I didn't get your email.
Yeah.
It's because they haven't updated their information, and we can't do that, they need to update that. And then it will give them the up-to-date information.
Yeah, that happens to people who change email addresses, and they'll say, I'm not getting the email. And we'll go into the system and we'll say it's, you know, at Yahoo dot com, oh no, I, I don't have that anymore, I, I got rid of that. So it's a good reminder too, if you change your information outside of that, you know, annual update, you know, to reach out to the school and let them know if you got a new cell phone, or you, you have a, a new email address, the school secretaries can help get that information updated.
Yeah, it's a good reminder that we're all working in conjunction with each other.
Yeah, there really is so many layers of, you know, collaboration when it comes to, to the school operations and safety.
Thank you so much.
There's also a, a quick reference guide in an instructional video on how to set your up, yourself up with School Messenger, right on the school safety section of the website. I know Dr. Burdos mentioned it earlier, but just to reiterate, that's the, that's the system that, that Erin has been about.
Great, thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Start down with that.
The system you were talking about, where if there's a 911 call and the phone rings for everyone, is that the same system the police were talking about during the synergy 911, where basically if there's a call, they have the ability to listen into the call as well?
Yeah.
So it's not just one person, like anybody that picks up the phone can listen, right?
So in that, in the, the internal building notification, it's the first person that picks up? So all the phones ring, but then it's the, the first person that picks up the phone that can actually hear the audio. In addition to the audio, there's, there's email and other notifications that go out that give, you know, the time of the call, the location in the, in the building. So that goes, that goes pretty wide as well. But the idea is behind that, like if one person is listening to the call, then that frees up everybody else in the office to start like an internal response. So not, everybody's not sitting at their desk, you know, just listening, that once one person picks up, then that person can relay the information to the other people in the office in terms of ask the nurse, send the nurse to the gym, you know, ask the principal to, to announce a hold, you know, so that the, the hallways are clear, to send somebody to the door to, to facilitate quick access to the police or fire. So I believe it was, again, Sergeant Allen mentioned that they test their fobs at the different doorways. They have unrestricted access into the buildings, and every police officer has a fob assigned to them, so they can get into the building. And then also with some of the dispatchable location information, if they know they're going to the gym, you know, police and fire, they know to pull up to the gym, and they'll just fob right into the gym instead of going through the office. But at the same time, it, it keeps everybody on the same page so that police and fire isn't in the gym, and the people in the office have no clue, right? That there's good communication still. So there's also heads up, we call them heads-up displays, you know, there are monitors in the office that show, you know, views of cameras in the building, which give them good awareness of who's entering and leaving the building. It's another component to it.
Thanks for the custodial staff who was in some of the schools last week, and they did a great job with it. And thanks for fixing the press box stairs because I was taking my hands when I was going up there.
Yeah, yeah, that's, we had to do it. It came out really good, very, very sturdy compared to what it was.
Oh, yeah.
Finally got to it and hopefully...
Any other questions or comments? I just can't thank you enough. We really appreciate you guys. Thanks for filling everyone in on the updates.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, the magicians. All right, we are going to move along to the revolving fund bylaw amendment. Ms. Sheridan?
I wanted to update you on a couple of articles that are going to be at the Fall Town Meeting on October 27th. There's two of them that are on the table. The first one is to add, to establish a new authorized revolving fund for the school department. That is for the Summer Institute program. So having its own revolving fund, it will be easier to manage the expenditures and the revenue for the Summer Institute program. And not only that, those funds will revolve year after year. So that's the first one for the article. I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about that, what the Summer Institute program is, if that is needed?
Sure, sure. So the Summer Institute is a professional development offering that we offer to our staff, and we also extend the invitation to neighboring communities as well. So that's part of the reason for the revolving account, because we do charge a registration fee in order to cover the cost of the expense. This past year, for example, at the Summer Institute, we ran, we ran four graduate courses through a partnership with Bridgewater State University. We had several of our own staff presenting courses, three-day courses, for teachers to participate in. And we're able to sustain that program and run that program at a very discounted rate for our staff because we're able to collect that tuition from, from other districts outside of Foxborough. So that's what helps us run each of the four courses. And by having this revolving account, we'll be able to manage that fund and better able to isolate what those expenses are and make sure that we're managing that properly.
With the revolving funds, the revenue in there can only be used for the expenditures for the Summer Institute program. So if there's any revenue left at the end of the year, it will roll over to the next year for Stephanie to use for her program. So that's the first one, that's Article Three. So if you go to the Fall Town Meeting, please help us vote that one in. The second one is Article Eight, and this is authorization for multi-year contracts. So with Mass General Law 30B, the town can only go into contracts up to three years unless the town approves the ability to go to five years. So it, this is a joint article with the town and the school, so that will give the ability for contracts to exceed three years, but with a maximum of five years. So some of the things that this is great for is you sometimes get better pricing if you go to five years, especially with curriculum, technology sometimes, that would be very helpful for the five years. The multi-year service agreements, it would also be helpful for that. So right now, even though we might get a great rate for five years, we can only go up to three years. So we're very excited about this one being on the table, so we're hoping that, again, if you go to the town meeting, help us get this one voted in for the authorization for multi-year contracts. So this does not need a vote, this is just informational only for what is coming up at the town meeting. And again, that is October 27th of 2025.
Thank you very much.
And there is, there's a significant cost savings when we're purchasing curriculum materials and platforms. If we're able to extend those contracts to five years, the cost per student can sometimes decrease by, you know, $2, $3 per student, and that might not seem like a lot, but when you multiply that by 2,500 kids, then, you know, it, it is a significant savings for us. So this would be very helpful.
And I believe you cover curriculum review, is, is that every five years?
Yes, this is also, it's consistent with our, it's more consistent closer to our curriculum review cycle, so it'll also help us manage our curriculum review funds a little bit better. Our curriculum review cycle is currently a six-year cycle, so if we're limited to only purchase three-year textbook licenses or three-year platform licenses, it means that mid-cycle, we're going to have to refresh a product that we haven't been able to go through a proper review for. So this will better align with our internal processes and, and help us make better, help us review purchases more consistent with our curriculum review.
Great. And with a nice cost savings.
And with a cost saving, so we like saving money.
Karen always gets excited about that.
I am excited about that, five-year one. The next thing I have on is the acceptance of donations, if you want me to roll right into that one?
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay. The only one that I have tonight is a $600 donation from the high school softball booster club. It is a restricted donation. The 600 is to order 100-hits Foxborough softball beater for the gym. So that is a restricted donation of $600 from the FHS Softball Booster Club.
I just wanted to add, might as well give a shout-out to the three students that have achieved this milestone thus far, Hannah Davis, Emma Callahan, and Megan Kelly. So congrats to them.
Congrats to them.
I make a motion to accept the donation from the Foxborough...
from the Foxborough High School Softball Booster Club for 100 Hits Foxborough Softball banner.
Second.
All right. Any further questions, comments, or discussion? I don't know what happened. Hearing none? All in favor? We do accept this donation with gratitude.
All right, thank you.
Great job, girls.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We're going to go right on to the 25, 2025, 2026 School District Goals and School Functions and Responsibilities. Over the summer, the five committee members met during an open meeting, but at our retreat. And we did a pretty deep discussion and had wonderful, lots of healthy discussion and healthy conversation with the aid of Massachusetts Association of School Committee, our representative, Sean Costello. So they kind of guided us in this process. So we've come up with these five, I'm sorry, yeah, five, five. Two school district goals and three school committee functions and responsibilities. So I don't know if you want to add any?
So I think that it is a great exercise that we go through. And having MASC there to facilitate that conversation, it helps make it richer because of just understanding what other school committees are focusing on. Obviously, ours is contextual as far as Foxborough, but it also aligns with our strategic plan or our plan for success in supporting that work as well. So having that alignment between the district improvement, school committee, it's all functioning as one.
I agree. Anyone have any, this is an actionable item. Anyone have any questions, comments, corrections, edits, anything to this list? I know we had a wonderful, healthy discussion. And thank you to Jamie for tidying everything up and putting all our discussion onto paper. I guess at this point, I would entertain a motion to adopt this.
I make a motion to approve the 2025, 2026 School District Goals and School Committee Functions and Responsibilities.
A second.
All right, thank you. Any further questions, comments, or discussions? Hearing none? All in favor? That'd be 400. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And I'll just add, the other piece that we had with this was the operating protocols, that separate document. And we'll bring that to the next school committee meeting for action.
Perfect, thank you. And next, we have the review of recurring school committee agenda items by month. This is not a list that we vote in, but we just do kind of go over everything and look at our year in a glance, our year in a glance on this.
The only thing that really stands out to me is that typically we've done that culture and climate analysis, the presentation here in October. But as you will recall, because we had a different survey that went along with the strategic planning, we've moved this one from the spring, because it would have been redundant, to October, the end of October. So we'll be administering it in October versus looking at the results. And the results will go forward a few months once it's been administered and we have that information back. But typically, to get back on that cycle, it would be. But just to kind of make that notation for this year.
Sure, thank you. And obviously, all of this is up for discussion. And, you know, at any point in time, we can add and we can move things as we need to. But this just gives a general outline and idea of what our year is going to look like. And you know what, as I'm speaking about this and looking at the document, maybe we should add it up on a slide, but I apologize. I shouldn't have thought of that. Sorry. But anyway, it's available and we will make sure it's out there. So that's pretty much it for that. Any other questions or comments or discussion on that?
It's a nice roadmap to be able to have an idea. For when people, like just this evening, which has always been here, August, when we look at the school safety updates, the role of the SRO, that piece that's there in August. And you'll see some of the other ones that if you were like, when do we do that? It's just a nice
Reference.
Reference.
All right, well, thank you for that. Okay, we're going to go to community update. We're going to start with Michelle.
Okay, today we had a CPAC playground playdate to try and meet new parents and students coming in. And it was pretty well attended. We had about 12 families, 20 students there. So probably one of our higher-attended events. Just to note, this year, CPAC meetings will be the second Thursday of the month and they will be starting in September. So look forward to notices going out soon about that.
Where are those held?
They're usually held by Zoom. That seems to be easier for most parents. But we are considering maybe doing like hybrid meetings or some in person, some by Zoom. But for right now, they're by Zoom and we are, we'll be looking for parent input about that.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Sure, so for the October Professional Development Day, the Foxborough Rec Board is going to be offering programming for students because parents still have to work. They don't get the day off. So you can go on their website and find more information about that.
Thank you.
School sports, well, sports have started for the youth as well. And it's something that always, because I live in like a neighborhood, it's something to be mindful for everyone. The school buses, just stop. It's not worth it. Don't try to beat them or anything else like that. There have been close calls in the past with kids and nobody wants to have any sort of tragedy. So especially since we have a new batch of young drivers that now have their license and they'll be going to school, they have to keep in mind that they were young once too and that they have to give that same courtesy for it, so.
Great reminder, Pat. Thank you.
Just really excited about our next Professional Development Day tomorrow and then to welcome our students back. One of my favorite days is to watch the buses down South Street, one right after the other. Our drivers do such a fantastic job. Like I said, we had three new drivers. But just, it really is kind of a community when you see the buses come down. So I appreciate the extra safety tip with them too.
For sure. Stephanie?
As Dr. Burdos had mentioned earlier, just the excitement these past couple of days from our staff. They're really excited to kick off another school year. So much learning and professional development that's going on over the course of these next few days to make sure that they're ready for our students next week. Just the energy, it's wonderful. I've missed it. It was wonderful to see everybody's faces over the course of these past few days and see them really digging into curriculum. It was just, just great and I can't wait for tomorrow.
Awesome. I went to one of the transportation meetings this week and just wanted to give a shout out to Lynn and Linda because they do just a fabulous job. So, I mean, facilities, technology as well, food service extended day, all of them. But I was able to meet all the bus drivers and the monitors. And it was really nice, a really nice meeting. So kudos to them for that.
There's so much magic going on. We talked about magic earlier, like it's like, it's like magic. There's so much magic going on and it doesn't just happen. It takes a lot of effort and a lot of work. And sometimes we don't always like recognize that. So thanks for sharing and that's important. Thank you. Yeah, okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn as I don't really have any community updates.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? 400. Good night, everyone. Thank you for being here.